Welcome, everybody, calling this meeting to order at 6:01, October 14. Roll call, please, Ms. Feliciano.
Mia Garcia.
Here.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Here.
Mr. Sheehan. Ms. LaFave.
Present.
Ms. LeBron Martinez.
Here.
Ms. Tensley Williams.
Aqui.
Mr. Isaza.
Here.
Mr. Willahen.
Here.
Mr. Collmore.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In March 29, 2025, Governor Maura Healey signed into law bodies to amend amended bodies entitled "An Active Relative to Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency ACT." Of interest to all governmental but public bodies in Massachusetts, the Act extends until June 2027 the authority for meetings of multiple-member bodies to be held in an entirely remote or hybrid format. All public bodies may hold fully remote or hybrid meetings without the physical presence of a quorum of the public body as long as adequate alternative means of public access is also provided. Pursuant to Mas Generala, Chapter 38, Section 20, I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the City's Community TV channel. And I have the privilege to introduce to our student showcase, Opportunity Academy. Please come up.
Yeah, so we have Principal Johnson here. We have a video. Irene, do you have a copy of that video? But when I saw that, so many of you know part of our part of our focus areas for the year and and one of our action plans was that schools are supposed to be putting, you know, belonging plans together. And when I saw this video, you know, I immediately thought this is definitely a product of, you know, Opportunity Academy's plans. Obviously, there's a lot of things happening on a day-to-day basis. But we want our kids and our staff to feel like they belong, to feel like they're connected to staff. And I saw this video, and it just made me think of Mr. Johnson's, like, you know, execution of that of that focus area. And I thought it was a really cool project. We got some students here to talk about it a little bit. But I figured we'd start with sharing the video unless, Mr. Johnson, you want to say a few words first?
No, I think we just start with the video, and then we can, I'll turn it over to them to answer some questions.
So the Humans of OA project is something that we have done for a couple of years. And we run it during the first week of school to kind of help students get an entry point into academics, building community. And really, the whole project is about who are you as a person?
For me, and I think for for staff and students, it just creates, from the start of the year, a strong sense of belonging. Students get to know each other, they get to know staff. And then that sets a tone for the year of OA truly putting relationships first.
So for the project that I worked on in the beginning of the year, I interviewed one of the staff members, Jerry. And you know Jerry is funny, as always, like, it's Jerry. But he explained to me, like, all the questions that I had asked him about, like, what if you want to do in the future and all that stuff? And he actually answered pretty, pretty good. He was just, like, showing how, like, staff members in OA can really, like, show you love and care and, like, really be there for you like a family and really just help out.
I interviewed my my principal. And honestly, I didn't know that he was from Indonesia. And I got to ask him some questions about that. And I found some some stuff that I didn't even know about him. And I learned some stuff about the plans he had during his school year and how he likes working with teenagers. And I think it was pretty interesting.
It's a very good project because we get to learn about other people, get to interview people, learn about their lives. Person I had to interview, childhood friend. He's really a sneaker head. So I took a picture of his shoes because that's like part of who he is. I liked it because we all get to understand each other, learn where we're coming from.
When people were writing about other people, it would like, it'll get a vision into their own life. And when I did Jerry, it was his sneaker collection. And I liked talking to him because sneakers is what I like. And when him being a sneaker head, it's like, it's like his whole personality for him.
It looks actually pretty kind of nice. I liked it. It was very social. You get to know more about the person. Getting to know more about others, learning about others, their past life, and what they used to do and what they'd like to do.
Me and my brother, Jaden Rodriguez, I'm pretty sure you interviewed him. We're twins. So it was pretty interesting to interview him. Like, with what I thought people would like to know as opposed to, like, some of my teachers' ideas or other students' ideas of what they might like to know. As far as the importance of it, I feel that it's like very, like, vital to getting people more connected. Not only because it's a lot of people's first times coming to this school, but a lot of people are here for some of the same reasons. So it's really good to see a lot of different people's backgrounds or stories that they have to share.
It helps you learn more about somebody or people in the building in general. And it just helps you get like a connection with staff or students, just people in general. It's important because more like in the beginning of the year, there's people that may be shy or this can that can help them boost their confidence, learn more about people. If they're not comfortable with staff, maybe they learn more about staff or they feel more comfortable in the building or in general.
Honestly, the staff members here and the principals here and the teachers and all of them and the students, honestly, they're amazing. All they do is, like, help you and encourage you to graduate and, like, have a better future for your life. It really, really brings out the joy in the school.
Yeah, so it's a project that we've started at the beginning of So it's a project that we have at the beginning of each year. It's called the Humans of OA. It definitely creates a sense of belonging for staff and students. But I'm not going to do the talking. I want to hand it over to some of the stars of the movie, of the film. So come on up, introduce yourself, share your name and your year and how long you've been at OA. Just go in order.
Jeremiah Mendez. As you see, I wasn't in the video. I came in like a month ago from Holy Okai School. I just really like the relationship you can have with the staff at that school. Because, like, in Holy Okai, I was doing good, but like, I was going down like wrong path, skipping all the time and stuff. And it just feels like in OA, I have more motivation to go to this class, do my work, and actually work towards graduating. And yeah.
My name's Elijah Mendez. I've been in OA since April. I came from Holy High School. Really, what I like about OA so much is like, it's like a family you could joke around. You don't got to worry about, like, in some places, I feel like staff take it too serious. And it turns into a whole situation. I feel like OA is a more comfortable and like, it gives you motivation to want to graduate, to want to be able to do more stuff in the future.
I'm Jacob Rodriguez. I've been at OA since the beginning of the year. I just think it's very different. It doesn't even really feel like school. It's a good opportunity. Like, the hardest thing about this school is ad mentum. And you really like, it's not even really a mandatory that you do ad mentum. It's just to accelerate you. So, yeah, I just feel like it's a very good opportunity to get away from what feels like school.
My name is Jaden Rodriguez. I started OA my junior year, the first day. Instantly coming into OA was like a sense of, like, a sense of trust and, like, comfortability for me. And it really helped me perform better in school. For the last two years of my last two high, the last two years of my high school career, I only had 16 credits, and I've already earned eight at the school. And it's really helped, it's really helped the new school, yeah.
Thank you so much. Questions from the school community, Ms. Wilson?
Thank you. I'd like to know, how did you find out about OA? And that was like the first thing, like, how did you find out about this opportunity? Because it seems like it's a wonderful fit for your education from everything I've heard, I mean, all the positive things that you've said. I'm just wondering, did did this, someone from the school department call your family, call you about this? Did a teacher?
The way I found out about OA was I've already known about it in the back of my mind from other friends telling me about it, recommending me. Because they, like, I have a friend that graduated last year going there. But what really made me switch was when when they even my mom noticing that I had not a lot of credits and I wasn't going to graduate. So I feel like they they determined to, like, who to invite based on, like, how good they're doing in Holy Okai.
Great.
Ms. LaFave.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much for being here this evening. So it looks to me like you all came from Holy Okai.
Yeah.
Big school, more students, more staff, more transitioning. That's understandable. A lot of you just recently started OA, right? And I hear, I hear and I see that it's been a positive impact for you. Now, my question to you is, during your time at Holy Okai and when you're going through that stuff, you're kind of figuring, do I even want to continue going? Then you find this opportunity, you go. Has that changed your mind? And what is it that you want to do in the future? And how is OA helping you to achieve that? And did it help change your mind about schooling?
So, pretty much. OA, I've, Holy Okai had me like, I was thinking about just like quitting. I was already a year behind in my sophomore year. I didn't have no credits from last year. So I was, I was thinking about just giving up, to be honest. But I just feel OA is so much more of like, they're really talking to you. Like, you get like your own personal experience at OA. And that really, like, made me made me rethink how I really thought of school. And it's really pushing me to hopefully go to college. Oh, hopefully, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
So I believe one of your questions was about, like, how did it affect, how did you want to, like, look at your future? Like, how did it affect that? So I forgot to mention, I'm a junior, and I went to Holy Okai for the first two years. I didn't do too bad. My freshman year, I was in all honors. But then my sophomore year just completely slipped. So it was like really bad. I just wanted to say, like, it's a lot easier to look back on what you've done in OA. Like, not only because there's so much people there to help you, but the site is like, it's just easier for me and it's easier to track your credits, especially with ad mentum. But genuinely, like, it gives you a lot of more hope because I didn't really even know where I was gonna end up going and, like, really anything. I was just only like, just making it, like, just going along with however my life was gonna end out. But going to OA, like, it makes you realize, like, more of what you have in yourself than anything else. Because I thought I was really a horrible student, but I usually be like, whoa, my bad for my grammar, but I usually be one of the more, I don't want to say smarter, but more efficient work, like workers in OA. So, yeah, I just want to say that.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Tensley Williams.
First of all, I love what I just heard. A sense of belonging, trust. You like your staff. You're very comfortable and you're relaxed. You're motivated, no pressure. Personally, you feel like you're somebody, and you are. You just really bless my heart right now. And I want to cry because so many bad things are said about teenagers. Oh, they're all on drugs. That's not true. If you, if you want to be an example, then stop cutting them down. Help them, show them what to do. And I'm here for you, okay? Ms. Tensley Williams, anytime you need me, call me. And I'm a good cook too, so watch out. But we, we love kids. And so I'm very impressed by what I just heard. And anything I can do for you, I'm here, okay? Thank you, guys, for coming. We love you.
Mr. Isaza.
Well, I only cook for myself and my wife. I'm an old man, so I don't know how you would say today, but you guys are really cool. In 1970, I was a research assistant to one of my professors. And she wanted to find out what was the connection, what was the relationship between motivation and education? And what she found out is it was that there was a direct connection, a direct causal relationship between motivation and education. And that's what I heard from each one of you. You're motivated to get ahead. And I couldn't applaud you more for it. Go for it, man.
Thank you, Ms. LeBron Martinez.
Congratulations to you all for considering another path. Back in the days, I think it was called Pathways, right? That program used to be called Pathways or something like that in the past. But that you consider a path to, you know, seek your education. And that is, just, just consider it, not to stop there. Start seeking out what you want to do for the future so you can continue. College is not for everyone, but, you know, there's vocational training, there's other opportunities. It's the work I did for 18 years. I still have the connections. So if you think you need that kind of support, let us know, let me know. But a lot of what I also heard, it was that people are listening to you. And sometimes in bigger environment. But something you have, I hope you have learned, is you're becoming an adult, right? Once you become 18, you're going to be an adult. And the way that you took a step to to make a choice is the same, now you're going to become independent. What does that mean? You're not going to have anyone else guiding you. But as long as you have that mentoring, that you can always come back and check in with your principals, your counselors, and any positive individuals in your community, you'll make it through. So congratulations to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willahen.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down and sharing your stories. I really appreciate it. We all attend your graduation each year. And it's always like a lot of stories that are, that are very warm felt. Okay, so I just want to see you, see you moving forward at the graduations. And I think you're very wise for your ages. And I'm very, very proud of what you're accomplished so far. Thanks again.
I just want to say one thing real quick.
Go ahead, Ms. Tensley Williams.
I was in the Air Force, the Army, and the Young Marines. So if you need some recruiting, let me know, okay?
I just want to say thank you for being here because I know that there were a lot of other things that you could have been doing right now. So I appreciate you being here, sharing your story, making good decisions with a good team. And I have a quick question, and not everybody has to answer, but whoever wants to. What are some things that we should learn about what happens in OA that we should bring to the other schools?
I feel like some things that y'all should learn about OA to bring to other schools is the way staff handle some situations. And also, like, also just the relationship between students and staff because some schools doesn't have a good student and staff relationship where then it becomes into altercations and other stuff. So I just feel like the relationship with staff and stuff needed to be brought to other schools.
Thank you. Mr. Soto.
Yeah, I just first want to, again, thank you guys for coming up. It's not easy to come and speak in public and meet a bunch of strangers that you haven't met before. But I wanted to talk about Humans of OA specifically in that project. One of our focus areas for the year is doing everything that we can to make kids feel like they're valued, feel like they belong, and feel like they're connected to their school community. And I'm curious if this project, you know, helped achieve that in some way or at least get you off to a good start and make you feel connected to the school, make you feel connected to each other, make you feel connected to to staff there. Does anybody want to talk about that experience and like going through that Humans of OA project? And whether or not that helped in any way?
I believe it was, obviously, not only just a very good project to start off with because it was very different than normal school. Like, it just made everything seem a lot different. At first, I looked at the, what we were supposed to do, how much words we were supposed to write, et cetera. I thought it was going to be a lot. Right off the bat, I was thinking it was a lot, like, I just said something. And right when I said it, the teacher already was on it, like, like, you could do it. So right from then, you already like, you already get a sense of like, it's interesting. Like, you already start thinking in some type of way. So as I did it, I completed it in the week that it was done. It was, it was pretty like, it wasn't really, it was, it was kind of like a wake-up as to, if you push work off, it like piles up. So when I'm, when I'm there every day, the only thing I have in my head is if I get everything done this class, I don't have to worry about it. And it's not, it's not that easy in my other school. Especially with how they allow you to manage your classes, et cetera. Like, it really could suit you. And I also just wanted to say something that I think is off topic. The ad mentum also ties in with like, like, work and and work-study and job applications. So it also helped me, like, learn what I wanted to do when I was older, just doing the work. So, yeah, I just want to say that.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Ms. LaFave.
Thank you. So this is the last, the last thing. First off, there's many things that happen in life that may veer us into different directions. It's up to us to first believe in ourselves. Although others may believe in us, we have to believe it first. And I believe that each one of you believes in yourself right now because you took that step forward into getting into OA. Mr. Felipe, you know that I admire OA and the job that it's doing because this is a pathway that was not available to many of us. It wasn't available to me when I was growing up. And it might have changed my life in the time being. But I am so interested because, let me see, one month ago, April 2025, okay. Two of you were there when it used to be on Maple Street. And now you transitioned to what, growing up, you know, everybody that went to pre-K, you went to Metcalf. How has that transition been? And what do you think of this new location? So I think it's Elijah and Jacob. Started, oh, okay, just Elijah, okay.
I feel like transitioning buildings and I feel like it's a change, but it was a, it was a good change. Because the small building, it was good, but I feel like it was just too small. I feel like transitioning into like a real, like, good building, you can bring more kids in that are having more difficulties. You could bring more kids in so they can change their life.
I'm happy to hear that. You know, I had my thoughts on it, but
Mr. Soto.
Yeah, I had an opportunity to tour the space with students in there last week, and that was the exact question that I asked every student and every staff member. And the, like, there was not one person at all that said, oh, we didn't like this move. Everybody talked about how much more space they have. Everybody talked about, like, it's really good that they have a gym now. And, you know, before school or during lunch, they have access to a basketball court, they can shoot around. But overall, just the space in general and the way that they're using it, everybody was excited. They, they talked about being nervous at first and seeing it and like, oh, my God, like, we're going to come here. But they also mentioned, a lot of the staff mentions, men, a lot of the staff members mentioned, from the time they initially toured to the day it opened, our facilities team did amazing job really making that space what they needed for that program. And I heard that from every single staff member. And I did, you know, the students that I did talk to that had been there before, they just talked about it's, it's so much more space and it's way better than where they were.
Mr. Johnson, is there's anything that you wish to share with us before you guys leave? That we should know?
No, I think the one part that, you know, if any of my staff members are watching, giving them some credit for the work that they put in with the students is incredibly important. They're able to meet with them, go through different revisions to make this possible and all the work they put in. These young men here, and we also have an invite. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, 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 oh.
Jill, yeah, Jill wanted, wait, wait. Wanted Dr. Cologne to plant power exhibition on October 27.
Let's do it.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate all of your support at OA, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ms. Feliciano, any public comment?
Nope.
And we don't have any student reports, nobody online either. All right. Superintendent's report?
Yeah, so this is not supposed to be in the superintendent report. This is actually from, you know, this had gotten referred, it came to committee a couple of meetings ago. It got referred to leadership and accountability. And they did recommend a vote for approval. But I think that the, you know, after discussing with Dr. Rivera Cologne and Devon, might want to table this and take it up at the next meeting.
May I have a motion to table this? The goals for the superintendent? Ms. Tensley Williams, seconded by Ms. Wilson. Discussion. Ms. LaFave.
Why are we tabling?
So because it's, it's not part of the superintendent report, it's actually should be in the committee reports. And we want to make sure that we, the public is aware of the actual vote that's going to be taken and we didn't
The recommendation from the subcommittee.
So it's a misplacement on the agenda. So I'm sorry, but I've been asking for this, right? And I understand it shouldn't be under the superintendent's report. But at the end of the day, we've also had things under superintendent report where we still ask for an action or a recommendation. So why can't this just, it's, it's on there. We could have, you could have just said what your goals are. We've done it on the previous one. If I go back to last year's and then make the recommendation to vote on it. So we're going to table this with the hopes to bring it back in two weeks just so that it goes under a different line item?
So we need the actual recommendation from the subcommittee it went to. So that then we can have the vote and have a discussion. Here, we don't have the actual recommendation from the subcommittee. Mr. Sheehan.
I'm just going to make a point of order that I motion to table this.
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Sheen.
Don't need help.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ms. Lefebvre, no opposed? So moved. Next up, new business nurses recommended for official appointment.
Yeah, we have a, a couple of new hires, um, uh, for, for our nursing department and um, part of the school committee policy BBA is that um, the school committee vote to appoint. So we included um, a little narrative of them and looking for a vote.
Motion that the school committee vote to appoint school nurses as recommended. Do you guys want the names in it or before I move forward? Do you want the names of the people or just say the school nurses? As recommended by the superintendent per updated policy BBA.
So. Seconded by Mr. Isasa. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Delegate voting, oh no, Ms. Wilson, what's up?
Can I speak to the delegate voting?
Oh, wait, let's, let's make the motion and then you can, yes.
Thank you.
May I have a motion that the school committee authorize the delegate to vote as deemed appropriate in accordance with the positions and preferences of the Holyoke School Committee?
So moved.
By Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Lebron Martinez. Discussion, Ms. Wilson.
So um, our last meeting, uh, we had a very lengthy and cumbersome um, discussion as a committee. Um, and I'm gonna be honest, it's because people did not do their due diligence, reading through the proposals um, prior to the meeting. Um, so um, I know our delegate and I know all, all, our alternate delegate, whoa, that was a mouthful for me, sorry. Um, uh, you know, um, we'll have read through those and I believe they can vote with their conscience um, as to how we vote.
Ms. Lefebvre.
So we've done this over the years that when we elect a delegate and a alternate delegate that the hopes is that when they are making any amendments um, on the delegate floor or they're making any comments um, for or against, that it is in the best interest of students. And um, with the hopes that it's hmm. Not what the Holyoke School Committee deems as appropriate, um, or our positions and preferences because no one else here knows what those recommended resolutions are. So when we're saying here that in accordance with the positions and preferences of the Holyoke School Committee, no one here has, well, some of us haven't looked at what those um, resolutions are that are gonna be given at the delegate assembly to then say for us to discuss here what our position would be. Or our preference would be.
Are you suggesting an amendment?
I just like I said at the beginning, I mean, when we elected the, the delegate and the alternate, it's that they are doing it in the best interest uh, of the students and when they're going up there. So we already give that position for them to do that. Um, I don't, I don't think we should have even had a vote on this. I don't know, that's, that's just my because I don't know what, you know, committee member Lebron Martinez, if she reviewed those, what's her preference? She didn't have a chance to discuss those things, so.
Ms. Wilson.
So the reason I put this on is that, um, you know, I think last year we were, you know, I was, you know, I, I wanted to get people's input. And so then I asked it to be added to the agenda. Unfortunately, the vast majority of committee members were not prepared to give me insight. And so I felt as though in preparation for the meeting, because I believe the um, contents are, have already been sent out from my, you know, all the motions and um, what the delegates are gonna be voting on, um, so they can, they have the opportunity to seek out guidance from us. So I would make an amendment um, that the school committee authorize the delegate to vote um, in support of student centered initiatives that meet Hoyoke Public Schools' vision.
That was the motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'm gonna give the second for discussion.
Go ahead, Ms. Lefebvre.
Then I'm recommending for this to be brought neck, um, to our next meeting and the resolutions be attached so that the other members of the school committee can review them and then they can bring their because the delegate assembly, the, it's not until November. So by the next meeting, they could have reviewed it and then provided their feedback, if that's what we're looking for. So that it'll help the, the delegate. That's a motion to bring to, to table. Sorry.
Motion to table by Ms. Lefebvre, seconded by Mr. Sheen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson on the opposed? So moved. Out of state travel. Hold on, Mr. Sheen.
Like to make a motion to approve the out of state travel for Timothy La Grant and Michelle Cooper Cox.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Lefebvre. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Moving to orders, order requested by member Wilson, fiscal crisis sign on letter. Ms. Wilson.
So I, thank you. Um, I came across this and I, I thought um, this might be something our district um, might want to sign in or sign on to, um, talking about um, you know, we're facing significant financial challenges, um, you know, the flaws within the school funding um, policies and we want to make sure um, to be able to you know, have an equitable affair of finances for our, for our city and our students. It's just something I saw. I have no significant passion behind it. I just wanted to bring it to the committee's attention and discuss if that's something um, the city school, school committee wanted to sign on to.
So do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we as this uh, City of Hoyoke School Committee sign on to the fiscal crisis uh, sign on letter.
Seconded by Ms. Tansley Williams. Discussion, Mr. Willehan.
Thank you. Are there any local um, towns or cities that have already signed up for this?
Ms. Wilson.
I do not know.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstentions, so right, that was Mr. Sheen. Motion passes. Next up, approval of meeting minutes.
Can I just follow up with that?
Ms. Wilson.
May I follow up with you, Madam Vice Chair, to discuss how we sign on?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And with Irene. Thank you. Approval of meeting minutes. Oh, you, your mic is off. Ms. Tansley Williams.
May I make a motion that um, the meeting for May twenty eighth and the one for June uh, third be um, combined? Take as a package, yes. Thank you.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Updates of committees. Oh, Ms. Wilson.
Point of order, we made a motion to take them as a package, but we didn't vote to accept them.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to accept and approve the meeting minutes of May twenty eighth and six three for leadership accountability and measurement. Made by Ms. Lefebvre, seconded by Mr. Sheen. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
You're welcome.
Updates of committees, policy and governance subcommittee.
Um, we had a rich conversation the other night about um, the new uh, policy changes um, from the DSE, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education with regards to dean admissions. Um, you know, we voted to support the policy pending a couple pieces of information that uh, Mr. Soto is going to be getting back to the committee because the language is slightly vague and it's being interpreted differently um, within the district. So we want to get clarification on that. And I do have a couple dates um, coming up. Um, and so uh, we were not able to go over our full agenda, but we'll be moving the piece, pieces not covered to that meeting coming up. And I'll share the date and time with individuals when we get it firmed up.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Finance and Operations, Mr. Willehan.
Thank you. Um, finance committee is meeting tomorrow night at five thirty at um, Suffolk Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Joint City Council School Committee? All right. Local Control Subcommittee, Ms. Lefebvre.
No, nothing yet.
Leadership Accountability and Measurement, Mr. Sheen?
Nothing to report.
Ongoing Business Policy Updates, Removal or Addition, Final Reading?
I'll make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the final reading of the above listed policies effective October fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Seconded by Mr. Isasa. Discussion? Ms. Wilson.
My understanding on these, there were no public comments concerning this. To, just want to confirm that. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Now moving on to removing policies. CHP, CCA, CHC, CL.
Do I have a motion? Like to make a motion to take as a package?
Motion to take as a package? Seconded by Ms. Tansley Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Do we have a motion for removal?
Yes, like to make the motion that we uh, remove the policies um, per the uh, agenda of today, CHP, CCA, CHC and CL.
That was the motion. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Isasa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, I should have asked. Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Final Fiscal Budget of twenty twenty six.
Yeah, so um, this is something um, that was discussed in, at length in the Finance and Operations Subcommittee. Um, we included the memo, but essentially every year this is how, um, this is how it works with the final budget. We developed the budget either based on the House Ways and Means budget numbers or the Senate Ways and Means budget numbers, depending on, of, on the timing of when those come out and how it aligns to our budget calendar. Um, and then at the end of the year, once, you know, once it moves to conference committee and actually gets adopted by the governor, there's usually some changes. This year we had some changes to um, between what we built into the budget. Um, we saw a slight decrease in our charter tuition reimbursement, a decrease to our charter transportation assessment and um, a decrease to our charter tuition assessment, but an increase in our school choice assessment. Um, it, you know, we usually go off based on the governor's cherry sheet for all of those numbers. Um, and whether or not they change through the House and the Senate. Um, and then um, you know, uh, we, we basically got to come back to the committee and update our appropriation to reflect the final numbers. Um, in the memo, we've included, you know, um, how these changes are gonna affect the overall appropriation and the overall budget that was voted on by the school committee. So we're hoping that, you know, uh, tonight we get a vote to approve the changes to align to the final state budget.
Mr. Willehan.
Thank you. Yeah, just um, um, follow up on
Point of order, there's, there's no motion. No discussion without a motion. So I, I didn't want, I thought you were making the motion.
I thought so too.
Can I make a motion for discussion? Or make a motion to um,
Make a motion that the school committee approve the governor's final budget proposal.
I thought that was done. So moved.
All right. Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Wilson. Discussion, Mr. Willehan.
Thank you. Um, yeah, just follow up on um, what Mr. Soto said. We met in um, um, finance committee, Mr. Bengano walked us through the process. Again, just to follow up, it's really um, reconciling the um, the governor's budget with um, with the Senate Ways and Means, I, I believe. So the proposed budget was a hundred and twenty-three million, eight eighty-one, four seventy-one and the final budget was um, one twenty-three, five eighteen, three two two. So it's just a um, the decrease of, decrease of three sixty-three, one forty-nine.
Mr. Isasa.
I just, I have a little bit of hesitation about the word approve in this motion. Uh, I don't know what kind of jurisdiction we have to approve the governor's budget. So I would like to um, offer an amendment that we say that the uh, school committee adopt for our financial purposes, the governor's financial budget.
On the amendment, do we have a second?
What was the wording again?
Adopt for our financial purposes.
Could I put an amendment?
No, we need, we need a second. Oh, second by Ms. Tansley Williams. Discussion. Ms. Lefebvre.
I mean, if we're looking so much just for, just put down that the school committee vote to receive the governor's final budget proposal. If we have to do that.
Mr. Sheen.
We're not doing any of that though. Like in the memo, we're making the adjustments in the memo because extra revenue came in. So, or revenue was decreased. So really what the motion should be, well, actually I'd like to hear what the recommendation, we, is this the voted on recommendation from the subcommittee? The one that's listed?
Yes.
I mean, it really should have been to make the adjustments outlined in the memo. It's not to receive the funds. We appropriate the funds. So the recommended motion should have been a motion to the cost centers that were impacted with the increases and decreases. So we would need that because we're not, the money's here and it's sitting here and can't be spent or used until we approve where it's being placed. So that, it, it should be aligned to what the document was that was here.
Mr. Soto.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Sheen. Um, and I just want to provide a little bit of clarity. Um, what we're looking to do is update the school department's budget. And um, compared to what was voted on initially back in June um, to what now is recommended in the memo, which will allow us to update our budget to reflect some changes and assessments that the governor made. So I think uh, what, what Mr. Sheen suggested is, is exactly right, um, uh, in, in the, the vote language. We're not approving the governor's budget. It has nothing really to do with the governor's budget as a whole for the state. But because there were changes in the assessments provided by the governor's budget, that has an impact on the school department's FY twenty-six budget and we're looking to update the school department's FY twenty-six budget to reflect, affect, to reflect the changes and assessments that um, that were, were a result of the final um, budget. And I don't, I, I know that was very wordy. I don't want to confuse anybody. I think that the motion or the recommendation that Mr. Sheen had is exactly right as outlined in this memo.
Mr. Willingham.
Thank you. Yeah, just as in, you know, the school side is the same as the city side. You're working with a proposed budget that was established months ago. And so there's going to be changes in effect going forward. So again, there is pluses and minuses to this budget, you know, from Beacon Hill. So the motion that was made and adopted at the Finance Committee meeting in September, September eleventh, we had a lengthy meeting that night. So the motion was made to approve the governor's final budget proposal, which I stated, one twenty-three, five eighteen, three two-two. So that was a motion that was made, seconded, and approved. So again, we're just-
What date was that?
September eleventh. That's when we met. So that was the motion, and that was made.
Ms. Wilson.
So my understanding is we are working on discussion point of an amended amendment. Okay. So I would like to clarify and make, I don't think we can vote on that amendment. We have to vote on that amendment before I make a recommendation that's clean, that just speaks to the language I think Mr. Sheen shared with us. But while we're in the meat and potatoes of this-
Or the maker of the motion could withdraw the amendment.
And who was the maker of the amendment?
Mr. Isasa.
I thought it was appropriate, but I will withdraw it.
So now you can make your amendment.
So I have two things. I'd like to speak to my point after I make the motion. So my first is I'd like to make a motion that we accept the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget based on the changes in the state allotments. I'm not sure allotments is the correct word. What's the correct word?
Or adjustments described in the memo.
Yep, so that, so again, that we're voting to accept the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget based on changes in the state budget. In the attached memo.
Motion made by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Willingham. Discussion. Ms. Stansley Williams.
I have a question for Mr. Soto. You said the governor gave us more. About how much more did they put in the budget?
Yeah, it's outlined in the memo. So we got less charter reimbursement, but we were also charged less for charter transportation and less for charter tuition. But there was an increase from what was initially reported on the cherry sheet for school choice tuition. So there was an increase there, but there were decreases in other areas.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Wilson.
Under one of the next steps in number one, it says in the third line down, the district may need to request funding if cost increases during, cost increased during the year. Where would we request this funding from? Because it doesn't say that, so I'd like to understand before I vote on anything.
Yeah, so we were not in a position where we need to do that. But if, for whatever reason, you know, particularly the transportation piece, if the transportation piece, because it's outside of net school spending, if, for whatever reason, those costs were to go up, it's typical that we would have to go back to the City Council and ask for additional funding to update the School Department appropriation to reflect that. That has happened maybe once in, you know, in my time here and, you know, in my ten years here in Holyoke or nine, nine and a half. We've had to go to the Council to request additional funding for an overage in transportation.
So as a follow-up question to that, if I may, because it's still about that point. So under Strategy and Transportation, what other costs might rise within that cost center or that area where the district may need to request funding as its reads?
Yeah, so included in that is transportation-
Right, besides that.
Communications and, you know, communications and strategy, and then the enrollment office. So all of the staff that fall in the enrollment office fall under that cost center. And that was in the budget document. We included all the org charts.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm just, because, so then, because we're covering under Strategy and Transportation, if there was additional expenses in communication strategies or the enrollment office, where would that funding come from?
We would have to request a budget transfer from another cost center. We would have to come to this body and request that. So anytime we're moving money from one cost center to another, it's our policy that we come to the School Committee and request a budget transfer.
So I was just clarifying because it wasn't really clear within the document. Thank you.
Mr. Sheen.
No.
Mr. Willingham.
Yeah, just to follow up on Mr. Soto, I know about, had to be twenty years ago or so. I know the School Department had to go to the City Council and request a million dollars. Million dollars that the city had a vote to fully fund the school system. I know my father was on the City Council, and he turned around and he voted in under quote protest.
Seeing no further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Now, on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
As amended? Any opposed? So moved. Final fiscal budget approved. Moving on to Student Activity Accounts and Procedures. Do we have a motion that the School Committee authorized the district's current procedures evolving student activity accounts and approve the current list of activities, student activities, clubs, and programs? Mr. Sheen.
Recommendation. In the document, I view it as three separate motions. But did the Subcommittee make one motion to, like, so that one motion that the Subcommittee made includes the accepting MGL Chapter seventy-one, Section sixty-three, the attached operating procedures, and the changes that are all in this closeout? Because I don't even see the changes in this spreadsheet that we got listed as even one of the recommendations. I'll make a motion, but I just need to know what.
Yeah.
Mr. Soto.
Yeah, so this sheet that you have in front of you was worked on in the Finance and Operations Subcommittee. It was supposed to be included in the packet and didn't make it to the packet. So the memo that you have in front of you is the memo that initially came to this body and was then referred to the Subcommittee. We heard from several School Committee members that, you know, we wanted to make sure we cleaned this up. And what happened was our Finance, the Executive Director of Finance, worked with the high school and looked, worked with the Finance team to look at some of these accounts that may have not had activity and some of the accounts that, you know, may need to be updated. So an example of that, I think in the memo, you have something there that says Spanish Club. But the, after talking to the principal, really, it's the World Language Club. So the list that you have in front of you, which admittedly, it's not included in the packet, is the updated list that we're hoping the School Committee would vote to accept. Like, we're trying to establish a baseline for where we're at with student activity clubs, so that anytime we get a new activity, we have to come back to this committee and create a new activity. So we're, we haven't had to do this in many, many years. And auditors do come out and audit the student activity accounts. And one of the things that we don't have record of is the School Committee ever approving the MGL relative to the student activities. So we're looking for, you're right, Mr. Sheen, we're looking for the School Committee to vote. And it's in that memo to, let me just open it up real quick for the School Committee.
I'll make a motion to accept Mass General Law, Chapter seventy-one, and Section forty-seven. Perfect.
Seconded by Ms. Stansley Williams. Discussion. Ms. Fave.
Would that need to then be added into the policy?
What policy?
Do you have student account?
I'm not even, we're not even there yet. This is just the district accepting.
This would be for, essentially, when the auditors come out. They say, has your School Committee voted to adopt, to accept MGL seventy-one, Section forty-seven? We can take these minutes from tonight's meeting and say, here you go, auditors. They did vote on that.
Mr. Willingham.
Thank you. Yeah, again, the September eleventh meeting was a long meeting. Okay, I'm going to say it a few more times before tonight's over. I want to thank Ms. Gladys Martinez for helping out that night. Yeah, so the Subcommittee, we had a long discussion on this law. It's a daunting law. I outlined it with bullet points on the side here. So yeah, so the Finance Committee adopted this law, and we made a recommendation to send to the full Committee for discussion and/or approval.
Ms. Wilson.
I have so many thoughts. I'm just really and truly. So I agree. I think it should be broken into three different sections because I can't vote on something I got today at three o'clock in the afternoon. I'm just not going to. So I will vote no if it's not broken down into three different sections.
So the motion is to-
Just accept. So then-
Yeah.
MGL-
Seventy-one section.
Because I'm just kind of like, I would think we'd have a policy around this, and in that policy, it would reference the law. I'm just trying to underwrap my head around the fact why we are adopting a law that we have to abide by, which our policies are written under. So I'm having a really hard time trying to understand why we need to formally adopt a policy that we have to follow that's in our, it's going to be in our updated policies.
Mr. Sheen.
So theoretically, if you didn't want to adopt the law, you wouldn't take the time to write the policy. Adopting the law opens up the door to be able to craft a policy, which is attached here, to comply with the law. So I mean, if we voted no, then you wouldn't take the work in adopting. You could write a policy that isn't even applicable because we didn't adapt the law. And there's lots of, I mean, we have to adopt different things that are like these, I can't think of the, it's not optional, but like, we adopt different things. The City Council has to adopt certain things that it says in MGL that communities can either adopt this or not, School Committee can either adopt this or not. So it's an option. If we don't adopt it, then we don't have student activity accounts. If we do adopt it, then we go to the next step. Then like, the policy is attached, and then the accounts are attached. That's why I did that first, because there's no point in having any more conversation if we don't adopt it.
Mr. Sheen. Mr. Willingham.
Thank you. Yeah, just to follow up on Mr. Sheen, I agree with him on that. Again, I'm going to say it one more time. It's a daunting law. When you look at it, it's, there's a lot of in there, a lot of data. Some of it refers to cities, some of it refers to towns. You know, just, I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, just the bullet points that I laid out. You know, I'm just going to read the first sentence on these paragraphs. The School Committee may. Okay, the School Committee may. The School Committee shall. The City Treasurer shall. So within this law, there's a lot of parameters. There's a lot of wiggle room on how we want to develop the policy. So yeah, my first thoughts from reading this is adopt the law, as Mr. Sheen said. And then I think this should be forwarded to the policy to get a grip on what the school system should be doing. Because you have the School Committee Authority, you're going to have the Treasurer involved. We don't even have a Treasurer, well, we're not going to have a Treasurer moving forward. It talks about the principals having authority. Talks about, you know, the checks and balances between the schools and the city within the accounting principles. So there's a lot of information here, not just the policy, but how to administer that policy between the city and the schools. Thank you.
Ms. Fave.
So we already have a policy that talks about Mass General Law, seventy-one, Section forty-seven, and it's JJEF student accounts. And was this one recently updated? Like, this law, like, recent, where something changed that?
Mr. Sheen.
The issue is, we can have the policy, but when any of the auditors come in or Mass DOR comes in, they say, when, between nineteen hundred and two thousand and twenty-five, did the School Committee adopt this? And if we can't pull out the minutes and have them certified and handle the minutes and say it was adopted here, they say, adopt it. Just like when we have to adopt MSBA stuff, they say, give us, and they won't even take the minutes until, you have to attach the minutes that we approve to, like, at another meeting and give them everything. They see, so all it is, is so if an auditor comes in and says, where is this? That Irene can pull it out of a drawer and say, here you go. And it could be one of the spot things that they ask for in twenty-six, and they may not ever ask until twenty thirty, but it just has to be available.
So then that makes it quite clear when you're fully saying why we're doing this. It's not that we haven't had this already addressed in a policy? When did you say that? You didn't say that it was addressed in a policy. Or maybe it's because I'm trying to figure out why I can't connect to all your attachments from here, and I have to be searching it here in order to see what exactly you're talking about. But okay, then. So it's only for compliance purpose that we're doing it. Apparently, they can't find the minutes. But can we go to the vote?
Hold on. Mr. Mangano.
Yeah, I won't repeat everything. That was just said, that was sort of what I was going to say. This is just for housekeeping. Auditors have like a preset list of things we have to provide. This is one of those things that we have to provide. And so having an updated vote with minutes, we'll just, you know, we'll put it in our files and we'll have it going forward.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. So that was on the Mass General Law, seventy-one, Section forty-seven. You guys said three separate motions. So that was number one. Do we still have two more?
Vote to approve the attached operating procedures, I guess, our operating procedures? For what? Well, you know, Mr. Sheen, I would love to find and pull it. Can I read it from yours? To approve the updated student activities account procedures.
Seconded by Mr. Isasa. Discussion, Mr. Sheen.
I have a question from what the Chair of the Committee said before. So just clarity, did the Finance Committee approve these? Or is the recommendation that these go to the Policy Committee? Because I thought the Finance Committee approved these, but I also thought you said that it should go to the Policy Committee. So I'm unclear on that.
Can I answer?
Mr. Will.
Those are my thoughts. The policy, so we're on student activities, right? So again, we had a long meeting on September eleventh. This was part of it. It's like, I'm going to read, I'm going to read the minutes of our meeting that you have not received yet. So the Committee reviewed the district's student activity account procedures, including various forms within that. It's a long document, okay, for fundraising requests. The Committee commented that the policy- The committee commented that the policy procedures were very detailed. Mr. Mangano stated that there are financial procedures already in place that support the district's student activities. Mrs. Levon Martinez asked about the fundraising controls within different accounts. Discussion about PTO involvement, that's in here too. Student activities, fundraising, including financial controls. Discussion about the role of the city treasurer. I'm going to go back to that. We could have a city treasurer in a year. And the municipal accounting system. Okay, we're talking about bringing on a CFO. Is that good? Right? That's just off the cuff. So and again, the city and the schools are on the same page here in terms of keeping track of all funds. It's unsure whether policy and government's committee should act upon these procedures at some point. Okay, so those are part of the minutes. The motion made was to authorize the district's current procedures involving student activity accounts. So the motion was made by myself. This is LeBron Martinez seconded. The motion passed 2-0 without further discussion. The recommendation will be forwarded to the full committee for discussion and/or approval. And I just keep going. I know, so this document was in place at our meeting. You know, we were sort of laughable, some of the stuff that was in here. You know, active accounts with $3, $5 in them, you know, the 1995 yearbook club, you know, so some of these things should be cleaned out. I know there were some dos and don'ts that Mr. Mangano recommended. Well, so I think there was also going forward a proposal where we can get a student involved and somebody's accounts are dormant because they had money left over. You know, the class of, you know, 2,000 had $1,000 left over. So moving forward, there might be a policy that we want to adopt where the students can make a vote with the administration to give that outstanding balance to a future class. So it's, so, you know, they can use it going forward. So again, I think the policy, even though we have a policy, it needs to be fine-tuned and that's where we stand.
Mr. Sheen.
Okay, so I have a, okay, so I think that in my opinion, we have a policy that, and I don't, I'm not even pulling it up, but there's a policy in our policy book that I don't know if it's been approved yet. I don't know where it stands in the process and that doesn't matter. But I think that these are not procedures, or these, what we have here are not policies, they're procedures. Just like we deal with, we're dealing with the graduation procedures now in the committee that I chair that we follow. I have to go back to all the district policies to see what's there. But I think that if the Finance Committee's recommendation is that these procedures should pass, then I am taking the faith in the Finance Committee that they've done their due diligence. So if the procedures that are written out still need another review, then I would send it back to Finance and say, finish reviewing it. But if it's all set and the Finance Committee voted that these are ready for prime time and they're ready to be approved by this body, then I am taking the complete faith of the members of the Finance Committee that they've done their due diligence and they've ensured that everything in the procedures is aligned with HPS established district policies. If it's not, then it needs to be referred back.
Ms. LaFave.
I might have heard five different motions in there. So right now, what was the specific one for the procedures?
Mr. Wellingham.
Just that one.
The Finance Committee, the recommendation we made was to authorize the district's current procedures involving student activity accounts.
Okay. Second. Oh, oh, my bad.
So that, that was made and seconded.
Yes.
And that passed 2-0. My ad libbing is just, you know, moving forward, there's going to be changes in the, you know, the city's financing moving forward. And we may have to address some of those changes due to the city's changes in their financial structure.
Ms. Wilson.
I'm just wondering if anyone looked at JJEF policy and the recommendations that was made? Because JJEF, which is the policy regarding this, has already, we've already reviewed it and we've made recommendations as a Subcommittee. I'm going to be honest, I'm not sure if it's come to the full committee. But if it hasn't, then I just want to make sure that this aligns with the language that was already discussed and approved in Subcommittee, which I believe that Mr. Mangano should have access to. And I know, so I'm just wondering if that happened.
Mr. Mangano.
Yeah, so just for context, so these are the procedures that we've had in place for a while. This also is sort of housekeeping in that the main change to these procedures was that we removed all the references to receiver. And there were some things that said the receiver could approve things that now are really the school committee needs to approve them, like the creation of new accounts, the elimination of accounts, the if there's ever needs to be transfers between student activity accounts. So those were the primary changes to the document that's been in place for a while. And then also with exiting receivership, we thought that the school committee should re-adopt these. They may, again, may have been adopted once in the past, but we wanted to kind of have a fresh start. I believe they align with that policy. I have looked at that policy as part of the policy review. Nothing jumps out to me as being contradictory between the policy and the procedures. And I'll just second what Mr. Sheen said, which is these really are procedures or they're sort of in the weeds. How do we handle like daily business with student activities? They're not, it's not a policy level document.
Thank you. Ms. LaFave.
Ms. Wilson. We are on only Section C of the policy. So Jay will be here in a couple months from now, hopefully, and then we can review it. But yeah, and I mean, there's been updates and I'm sure you guys have already addressed them to Section G, Section K, E. But right now, we're working on the old policy.
Right.
For the time being, so.
Mr. Sheen.
Since it's come up a couple times, I just want to just note that we've mentioned that the city financial structure is in flux and that is in flux and that we as the largest budget in the city are also in flux because I don't think there's been any actual changes to structure made. And the problems that that causes with city government, that you have your largest functioning department in the city that really has to then go through all of our policies again in a very short, or procedures in a short amount of time to change terminology and that there's other people dragging their feet that this isn't getting done. And I think that it's a slowdown in city government that is only going to negatively impact this committee and other city departments.
Right? I don't see any further discussion. Ms. Wilson.
Can I, I didn't understand what you were referencing, Mr. Sheen. I'm very sorry. But if it's something like it flew over my head, so we can meet after, discuss it.
We, the city voted to eliminate the position of the treasurer. And Mr. Wellingham mentioned many times that there's reference to the treasurer.
It is.
We, come February, we don't have a solid financial structure.
Correct. Thank you.
Because the city council hasn't acted.
On the motion, student activity account procedures. Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So moved. And we still have one more motion. Mr. Sheen.
I'm making this motion just for the purposes of discussion or something else. But I'll make a motion to approve and accept the updates and transfers on the spreadsheet here. Make the motion.
Ms. Tensley-Williams seconded. Discussion. Ms. Wilson.
I want to make a motion to table this item based on the fact that we did not get this in our packet. And according to our guidelines, we should be having any item that we're voting on enough time to review. And I don't know about anyone else, but I did not.
Do we have a second on the table?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Sheen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And that is the, yep. Announcements are at the end of the agenda. Now may I have a motion to move into executive section, not open to the public because of an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body for the purpose of the Holy Public Schools therapist's contract.
So I was going to say, so moved.
So moved. Mrs. Wilson. Seconded by Mr. Sheen.
We're not going to meet in regular session, right?
And we're not coming back to regular session. That's correct. Thank you. Real call vote.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Ms. LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams? Mr. Isasa?
Yes.
Mr. Wellingham?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson? Yes. Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
And Dr. Rivera Cologne? Yes.